Meeting of the Sweetwater Commissioners and Mayor, Lord. As February 1st, we will have prayer. It'll be the Lord's Prayer, then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And Craig, if you don't mind, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Let's all stand. The Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Make us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; and as in heaven, a valley and flood for ever. Amen.
Mr. Ford, appoint a witness to apply for the United States of America. In due repugnance, we wish to stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Hughes?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Commissioner Moser?
Here.
Commissioner Stockton?
Here.
You've had a chance to look at the minutes in your packet. Do I hear a motion that means our monthly meeting of January 4th, 2020, and the workshop of January 25th, 2021, do I hear a motion to itself? So move. Second. In discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion carries. The recorder now has the report on distribution.
Page one in the general fund, TCRS, our November retirement payment, twenty-four thousand three hundred eleven dollars and thirty-six cents of the employee and employer portions. Further down, you'll find Blue Cross Prejudice in Tennessee, three thousand eight hundred ten dollars and forty cents. That was employee and employer portions for dental vision, life, accident, disability insurance. To SIGNA, we paid forty-six thousand eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents on medical health insurance premium for employees and employer portions. You'll see a payment, and I'm going to mention this multiple times as we go through the general fund, eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to Coleman Glass. That was part of the placemakers grant. That grant is a hundred percent to the city. The property owner provides a ten percent match, and then the grant reimburses us with the other ninety percent. So there's no cost out of pocket for that one. Page two, the general fund. We made a payment, a thousand dollars to Sweetwater Hospital. That was towards our new website, which was also paid for with funds from the placemakers grant, which is through the State Department of ECD. Nine thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars to Sweetwater Utilities Board. That was a stormwater payment for the month on that line. Page three, fuel billing for the month of November was five thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and three cents. And then we made three payments on down to the Economy Inn, Hunter's Bakery and Cafe, and Days Inn. And those were in the amounts of three thousand, two thousand, and three thousand respectively. That was from the Sweetwater Business Relief Grant that we partnered with East Tennessee Foundation on. And half of that match came from the tourism fund, and half of it came from East Tennessee Foundation. Nothing significant on page four. Page five, towards the end, to our Utilities Board. That was our utility payment, street lighting payment, twenty-five thousand nine hundred and one dollars and nineteen cents for the month. We also made another placemakers grant appropriation of fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. All of those that I mentioned for the placemakers, we filed the reimbursement request, and that should be coming in, probably be posted in February. The bottom of that page, one thousand three hundred and ten dollars and ninety-two cents to County Record Services. That was our annual tax notices being mailed out by that third-party vendor, and that also includes a postage. That's everything in the general fund. In State Street Aid, we had a payment of one thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents to Cannon and Cannon. Those are the engineers on the Hawkins and Lindlud paving project. And bust for that one, they did give me notice last week that that was completing NEPA, and they would be turning that into T-DOT. So hopefully we'll be getting a notice to proceed to right-of-way, which should be fairly quick, since we're not acquiring any right-of-way. We're just paving. And then they should give us notice to proceed to construction. I think that we'll be able to pay back this summer.
Let me ask the question, or at least hold the question to them. Will they have to check right-of-way on Hawkins Road since it's already been paved under it one time?
Hopefully that'll make the process go quicker, but they will still make us go through the right-of-way phase. It should just be a waiver. We should just have to send the letter in. The engineers say it's just asphalt on top of existing right-of-way, and they should just give us the approval, which is probably about a six-week process. But I think that we'll be able to pay by this summer. And just for the public, that's Surface Transportation Fund. So when you go to the gas pump and pump and pay gas tax, it's like thirty-six cents per gallon. That's the funds that's being used for that paving project. Drug Enforcement Fund, nothing significant there. We did have a deposit from some drug seizures from Clark and Master. Tourism Fund, there's no expenditures in the tourism fund. So the only thing showing is the revenue from hotel motel tax that month. In the Home Grant, we had three expenditures totaling around fifteen hundred dollars. Again, that grant is to rehab five homes or eight homes on Blair Avenue, and it's a hundred percent grant. So the city has reimbursed a hundred percent for that. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Your motion to accept these distributions?
So move.
Been made, motion been made second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion does carry. Next on the agenda, both of our friends of Sweetwater, Craig and Callie. Where is Callie, Craig?
She's baking.
Sorry.
They have helped us down through the years with five Ks and things like that, so I'm going to turn the floor over to you. Craig, I think you've got a request.
Yeah, I don't know what the, what I was saying here, if that's okay? So what we're requesting is, is permission to conduct a five-K run walk on September 11th of this year. This will be the 20-year anniversary of September 11th, and we need, as a town, I feel like we should commemorate that in some way. Because we live here, we want to do it here, but we want it to be a county-wide thing. That's why we have called it the Hero Run, and we are going to have a symbol, not a Superman symbol, but a symbol that looks like the symbol that's on your paper there. I apologize for you that don't have a copy, but it is, it is the Pentagon as well as the towers. It is a 9/11 memorial symbol. So we will do that, and we'll have that on all of the shirts. We decided this year that we really wanted to call it the Hero Run, because those folks are heroes. The 71 officers, 343 firefighters, and numerous other folks that perished that day. And in this time, we feel like hero fits better, because we want to have on each shirt, "I'm running for." And you can pick one of the heroes of 9/11, or you can pick someone that's a nurse, or that maybe rides in 431, our ambulance, that's here in Monroe County. And we want you to be able to write that on there. We'll have a station set up at the race for you to do that. You can run for Eddie if you want to. That'd be great, because he is a hero. He's out there on the front lines. So we want to be able to have that for folks. We're going to have a touch of truck, and that touch of truck will be police cars, fire apparatus. We are hoping to, actually, we've got a crazy goal. There are 26 agencies in Monroe County, the emergency services. A lot of those are fire departments, volunteer fire departments across the county. The majority of them are that, but you've also got 911, you've got the Rescue Squad, you've got Sweetwater Police Department, you've got Sheriff's Department, you've got all the municipal fire and police departments. So we are hoping to raise enough money through this race, through sponsorship as well as entries, to get five hundred dollars to each emergency service. So that's what we're asking for, is to honor the memory of a day that we'll never forget. And for some of these kids, they've never experienced it. But we hope to have a memorial wall, or we will have a memorial wall out there with pictures, as well as the names of those involved in that tragic day. But we want people to come and experience that. We'll have a speaker. We'll have some different things. I've got a piece of the Twin Towers that will be there. And we want people to come and just enjoy the run, walk, remember those folks, remember our heroes. So that's what we're asking for, Commissioner. And if you've got any questions, I'll let me answer.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions?
Where do you propose to do your run at?
We propose to do it on Main Street, which we do understand that would be shutting Main Street for about an hour. We've worked with Eddie and John in the past on these things, and we'll have a rolling open. So what we'll do is we'll start at the gazebo. We'll run towards Rule King, and then from there, we'll run back all the way to 322. And what we do is, once we pass the downtown mark, we'll open those streets back up. Once they get past, I can't remember the cross street there, Post Office, we'll open that back up. So it does take about an hour of closed time, but we've worked with them in the past. We'll also use some of the emergency services that are on site that day to help with traffic. So it will be a little hot foot for the city, but I will work with Eddie and John on that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Are you going to have like a registration fee, Craig, like we did in the Fourth of July, twenty-five, or?
Yeah, twenty-five dollars is probably all we can have. We do not have anything live yet, because I needed your permission first. But we will have, our plan is to have the website live about the end of this month. And when the Half Marathon Marathon is here, we plan on handing each of those a flyer about the event to get them to come back.
Anyone else? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve this request?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise. Okay.
Thanks, Craig.
There is no old business under new business. We have Daniel Rich here, our library director, to provide a annual library report.
It's unfortunate to recap for 2020. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, libraries across the world were forced to steal back services and staffed hours. Some libraries closed at the beginning of the pandemic, and they're being closed even today. Most libraries, however, adapted and changed to fit their community needs, and that's exactly what we did at Sweetwater Public Library. We were fortunate to only have to be closed completely for 29 days, and we've been in phased reopenings ever since, based off of the active cases within the community. During the pandemic, we quickly modified the number of our services. We introduced what's called a per-site checkout. You can place your orders either by phone, or you can go ahead and place holds online, and then do a pickup in the parking lot. We have express, walk-in, computer access. We expanded the Wi-Fi services, so it's available for free for quite a bit of space around in the parking lot area of the library. We have piloted a hotspot program and offered both online and in-house events for our summer reading program, which normally is an in-person thing in the month of June. We have expanded it to June and July in order to adapt to the pandemic. We now have what's called STEAM kits that can be checked out from the library for a lot of the families that are doing homeschooling or supplement what the schools are doing with their online program. And we provided mask-making workshops, as well as many other programs that are available online and by YouTube as well. So the numbers for the library this, for the 2020, we ended up with 20,044 library visits. We provided 286 masks by way of the CARES Grant. We had 1,073 people using computers, 1,263 that used the free Wi-Fi. Actual physical checkout of materials was 13,180. We had 7,795 who started using the REEDS program, which provides, with your library card, you have access to free eBooks, free audio books, free magazines, and there's even free movies on there. All it takes is a library card to access those services. One hundred and forty-seven programs, workshops, and classes were offered. We had 2,977 attend those online and in person. We had 318 service hours provided by community volunteers, which is equivalent of about $2,300 minimum wage value. Little bit lower numbers than what we normally do, but I'd say with the pandemic, not bad at all. We were fortunate to go ahead and add this year a seventh little free library in the community, and per, helping rebuild two others. So even when we're closed or we have renewed services, there are always books and reading material available in our community. So we're very thankful for all the help from the community on that. Because I know the quantity of the refill, and there's a lot of classes. Any questions for me?
Could you just tell them what the hotspot and the take-home STEAM kits included, just so they know in case they're approached by a parent that might have a need that they don't know about?
We actually, the STE, it started off with the STEAM kits meant for the kids that has, it might have a game in it, several books in it. It might have things that help them with math. It might even have some labels or robotic stuff in the kit. And then we thought, well, there needs to be something for the adults too. So we started offering an adult coloring kit. It has the adult coloring book in there, colored pencils, and pencil sharpeners as well. We're going to start offering more of the licensed kits, so you can check them out and take them home. As part of the CARES Grant, we were able to bring in three hotspots that actually can be checked out from the library, our learning program. Unfortunately, the CARES Act did not cover complete costs, and we would have to pay for a part of that billing cycle. So we weren't able to do more than free of them. But they're in their testing phase right now, and they're out to some of the families right now being tested to see how well they look. So we'll see. If that's something that the community feel like they need, we'll start working on grants to start paying for more of them. But we also expanded the Wi-Fi at the library, so you don't have to ride up against the building anymore. You can actually be out in the parking lot and still have internet access.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Good job. You do a good job. We want you to know that. We're, our libraries, really good.
We get there with the help of all, all the commissioners and everybody within the city. That's all there is.
Thank you.
If anyone wants a brochure, they're sitting up there, just pass some along.
We advertised four bids on a police vehicle. We got one bid. That was from Detective Jones. Are we buying these straight out, or is this part of the lease?
No, the lease comes after July. These, these two cars is cars that's been, well, I'd say individual. Drunk up, total. So we're just trying to, we've been trying for six months to buy those vehicles.
Okay. Well, this is for two bids. Looks like it's got about 150 accessories on it. Off-wheel drive, automatic transmission, just different things. You know the routine. The price for the two is ninety-three thousand four hundred and seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Ninety-three thousand four hundred and seven ninety-two. And this does also include the already equipment to accessorize them, right?
There's almost 10,000 dollars worth of equipment on each one.
If that'll include radar unit and the infrared video camera and the rifle racks and cage, everything.
Okay, we will. Another bid is for 2024 F-150. Crew cab, four-door. Forty-four thousand five hundred thirteen thirty-nine. So is this not?
So it's three vehicles total. There's two SUVs and an F-150, which is, it matches our bids backs. Part of this, y'all will remember, we rolled money from last year that didn't get spent, because we couldn't get the vehicle we wanted ordered last year. So part of that is rolled from last year's budget, still sitting in a reserve account. The remainder of it was an insurance recovery that we made, where a vehicle was totaled last year, and we were no longer able to use that vehicle. So the insurance reimbursements were totaled out of the vehicle, so.
That truck was totaled down here on Little Wethersby.
Okay, so we are actually bidding three vehicles. So I'm going to put it up for bid for the ninety-three four oh seven ninety-two. Do I hear a motion?
That's the price for both, all three?
Three.
The ninety-three four oh seven ninety-two is for the two SUVs, including the equipment. They didn't split up the equipment price, so that's, I want to say normally we pay between 10 and 13,000 on the equipment. But it's ninety-three four oh seven ninety-two for both SUVs. And then the one Ford F-150 is forty-four thousand five thirteen thirty-nine, and that does include the equipment, the rifle mount, the cage inside of it for the police cage, all of that.
So that's about 140,000 for three, right?
Yeah.
So we're, are we replacing three or just buying three right out?
We're getting a lot of money. We're replacing three. See, we had with, with COVID, the Ford Motor Company was shut down, and we had the money, this is money that we had left over from last year's budget that we moved into this budget to get. And then we had two that were totaled in car accidents where they were hitting the people. And that's the two Explorers, and the truck was totaled down there on High Street.
Okay, did we get insurance money back from this?
Yes, yes.
And we have that in our reserve.
Yeah.
So... The first one is for two, 2021, with all the bells and whistles, of ninety-three four oh seven ninety-two. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
In discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion carries. Then we have another bid, which is a 2021 Ford, twenty-seven thousand one hundred sixty-nine. Oh, yeah. Then I have one, it's a 2021 Ford F-150. Forty-four thousand five hundred thirteen thirty-nine. Hear a motion?
I'll make the motion for the Ford in this one here.
Second. In discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion carries. Now, we own these, right? They are ours.
I would like to say, these vehicles, especially they changed body style this year. They, they caught up. And it, we've been trying to get vehicles for about six months.
And just for clarification, board, I understand that it seems like we've come up with three bids and get, but it's not that way. We've been trying to get these for way before COVID started. And then when it started, Ford placed, quit making them, and then they said, well, you know, the newer body style is out, and we can't get the old one, and that's where it comes from. Like I said, the two Explorers were involved in wrecks, and the truck was involved in a wreck down there.
Okay, thank you, Eddie. We discussed the past several meetings of a, what we call a part-time employed litter control person, which we advertised. We received one application and moved forward with pre-employment screening. Commissioner Hughes, do you have a motion to hire?
I'm going to motion, we are Angie Gordon for this part-time litter control person.
Angie Gordon. Do I hear a second?
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion carries. Commissioner Richardson, I think you have a motion to fill a vacancy in the fire department.
Do, I make a motion that we promote Derek Ingram into a full-time vacancy at the fire department.
Got a form of motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
In discussion. If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion does carry. Now, we have a budget amendment to review, which includes COVID grant funding and expenditures, and the new litter control budget. We're going to have to amend this budget. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Motion does carry.
Were we amended in ordinance?
Got a police department appointment. Okay, roll call vote on the amendment of the budget.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Stockton?
Aye.
Okay, motion does carry. Now, Bill, you have a?
Yes, we have a officer that is transitioning to retire. And we have an officer that we trained here. He started out here, and he left. And he wants to come back, and we're going to put him, we can put him on the road now, because he's got stuff to go to work. That's Jaren Turpin. We had him to call. We're bringing him back. And Suzanne Ward will be transitioning out of the fire, police department. We don't know exactly what day she's got time available. She's using that, but we need Jaren. We're going to let Jaren take her place. Jaren Turpin. I'll make a motion for him.
Second.
Motion made second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion does carry. Okay, we have a rezoning ordinance for the property where Red Stag Fulfillment Center is proposed to be located. Jordan Mullenhauer is here to answer any question that we might have tonight. This was a recommendation unanimously passed by the planning commission. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion for adoption of ordinance 988 to rezone the parks.
Second.
Take it.
In discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, motion does carry. Jordan is here, if? Roll call, please, on that one.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Stockton?
Aye. Okay. Jordan, you got anything you want to say? I know we had a meeting last weekend. It was really a good meeting. Had a full house here, and you was on Zoom, I think, so.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks again for how possible and helpful this meeting has been. It's been incredible to work with different members of the city. I mentioned a few that didn't call this last week, but the mayor, Jessica, Eric Hicks at Sweetwater Police Board, and also Chuck here, has been just incredibly helpful. It's a complex project. There are thousands and thousands of details that our team is organizing. We have some excellent engineers and advisors. These are two of my crack shop consultants who are helping us on the project, but it's going very well. There's a lot of details to manage, but it's going very well, and largely in part to just the help that we've received from the community in getting questions answered, and being able to sit down and work through engineering questions with utilities teams, and boundary and roads questions with Chuck and his team and so forth. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Finally, we have the capital improvement plan. The changes requested in the workshop has been incorporated into drought. I'll open the floor for discussion now. We will put this up again in the February workshop. Is there anything that needs to be added to the capital improvement at this time? I would also encourage that you, if you do, talk to Jessica, so that we'll be starting on the budget here very shortly, and we can infiltrate all of this then. And so... We have recommended, mentioned the workshop. We would like a date of March the, around March the 17th at 11 o'clock to have a working workshop. Does anybody disagree with that, or can't make it as far as you know? It's March 17th. I'll be on. make it as far as you know? It's March 17th. That'll be on, on Wednesday.
Yes, can I ask a question on the state street agent under equipment line for the year 2022? That'll be the budget we're working on.
Yes.
And that's, we already have $250,000 for our equipment and that?
Well, you told me you needed a dump truck, so I put $250,000 in there. Now, I have no idea what dump truck costs. And I put it in two years in a row instead of buying them both in the same year. So if I need to move that around, tell me.
Well, you're talking about a dump truck and also about the, we're starting on the budget.
Do you think those numbers are good, though, for this capital improvement plan?
I think so.
Okay.
What year is my full improvement project coming in, 2021 or 2022?
So the full improvements are not for this coming year, starting July 1st, but the following year. And that's because that's when that grant cycle loads up again, is in that year.
I just came to, I know we sometimes talk about how good we have it here at the city and the wonderful set of employees that we had, but I met with a gentleman just last week that is investing in our community and opening a business. And the story he told is he left another state headed to Tennessee, and he was making six stops, and he was going to purchase property to start this business before he went back home. And he told me specifically that Jessica Morgan and Chuck Whitehead is the reason that he purchased property in Sweetwater and is opening this business, based on the help that he got from them. And I, like I say, I can't not say enough about Sweetwater and opening up to other people. I've heard several times from the folks, a lot of times, Sweetwater, other towns talk about doing things, but Sweetwater actually acts on it. And it's because of these two individuals that this business is here today. So I just wanted to share that news with this board. It speaks extremely highly of these two individuals.
I'm going to get you a whole truck for real.
I'm doing the bunching, what are y'all talking about?
Sunny in Sweetwater.
We appreciate everything they do, that's for sure. So that'll be from about 11 to 2 on that workshop, and we will have lunch provided. Will it last that long?
I don't know. Depends on, depends on how much a dump truck costs. I just put that down. If you would book that out in your calendar and let me know if that date doesn't work, we can talk about a different date with February workshop.
We've never had a city council meeting last that long, have we?
I think our budget workshop last year was two and a half hours, though. Two hours, two and a half.
Yeah, it was long, so that's for everything.
Okay, 11 till 2. Finally, we have a grant announcement that we got. It was posted Friday. What it is, is a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts through the Tennessee Arts Commission. It is a grant that will put a mural on our wall down here. And I don't know the grant itself. Those murals are pretty high. I will say that. And so I guess it'll be a picture of Chuck and Jessica down there. About the only thing I know it could be.
I'll make a bust.
Nice letter from the grant people that said this. The moment we received the application from Sweetwater, we were all giddy. Is that the same thing as tickled? For a few reasons. Much as its name suggests, it's a sweet town of about 6,000 residents with a thriving Main Street program, the downtown business owners of whom are a majority females. And this is going to be built around females. It's kind of like women taking the lead, which hell, we all know that. But that's kind of what it's built around, so that we get this grant of recognition of women. Is it from Harry T. Burns, this kind of thing?
Yeah, it was commemorating women's suffrage being 100 years this past year.
Yeah. And Harry, Harry T. Burns is part of Sweetwater. He had a law office here for years. And if I'm not mistaken, didn't he cast the, decided to vote for women to vote?
He changed his vote because his mother wrote him a letter. She said, "Son," so he changed his vote.
But it's built around that, recognizing our women for what they do and how important they are to us as a community and as a nation, really. But anyway, it is presented for public view. We'll have to pick out exactly what kind of mural that we'll get up there. And if Jessica and Chuck comes up, we'll vote on it.
You're going to have to wear a dress.
Everybody's satisfied. But anyway, they are happy with the partner. There's two of them in Tennessee that got it, and we have one of them. And it's going to make that wall down there look so much better, and it's going to enhance the whole downtown area. So thank you, Jessica. I think you was the one that found that, and?
Dave Jones sent it to us, yeah.
Yeah, Dave Jones sent it to us, and we thank you for that. Good job, as always. And we'll have more on this probably next meeting night. And next meeting night, I will be giving out the 2020 Citizen of the Year Award. There will be two of those that I have given out since 2010, and this will make the 12th one that we have given out. And so it's going to be somebody special that we all know. So that'll be the next meeting night of March, March. Okay, anything else coming forward? All minds clear? Thank you for being here. We are adjourned.